So councillor Butland, we're on. Why don't you go ahead and before everybody collects, why don't you take your Butland minute now? Your councillor Butland minute now.
I need a moment.
Yeah. So councillor Butland would like to recognize an incredible agency, I guess, in our community from his perspective and some of their great accomplishments.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for that Butland minute. I think we too seldom recognize and acknowledge achievements in our community. And one certainly I have been involved with from day one, not that that attributes anything to their success, but in the beginning, in the Innovation Centre, the GIS component, they said, what is an Innovation Centre and what does it do? And I think there are probably a whole lot of people in Sault Ste. Marie still ask that question. And I knew that they had received awards, but to be recognized over and over and over again, Esri Canada Award of Excellence in 2012, International Special Achievement in GIS 2007, recognized by World GIS, not just Ontario, not just Canada, but world recognizing. They presently have 60 clients in Sault Ste. Marie, one of which is the city of Sault Ste. Marie. And we have a staff of two, and I really believe without the GIS component, we'd require a whole lot more staff. It's a money saver. It's made us more efficient, less staff and less records, mammoth vaults of paper records. Just this past couple of weeks, the Northwest Ontario, I think, Municipal Association called together the best GIS initiatives in North America. There was Seattle, Minnesota, St. Paul, York, Calgary, and Sault Ste. Marie. So I'll just read a quote here. "Over the past decade, Sault Ste. Marie has been leading the country in respect to the novel application of the use of spatial data with advances in transportation management, natural and resource management, economic development, municipal governments, governance and management, but also for the purpose of improving health and social services." And if there are still people who don't know what the Innovation Centre does or the GIS component, by all means, go out to a well-known university and see for yourself. Congratulations.
So we're gonna have to really make this quick. Councillor Sheehan, very quickly, please, a lot less than a Butland minute.
Yeah, it'll be a 10-second Sheehan moment. Just, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, staff and the community, just wanted to recognize the councillor Myers' birthday this week. Happy birthday councillor Myers.
I didn't know he was gonna do that, councillor. Thank you councillor Myers, you had one, and then we gotta get going. So we're gonna pass it over to Madam Clerk right after this.
Thank you, and thank you to my wardmate. I just want to, on behalf of all of City Council, Mr. Mayor, congratulate you and your lovely bride Kylie on your recent marriage. You knew that I wouldn't let you get away with that. So thank you on behalf, or thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Just congratulations to you. That's one announcement. And the other one is, I just wanna also again extend congratulations to Sumail, to the Hollinsworth family for their 100 years, just tremendous contribution to this community and the announcement of the $100,000 fund that is there and to encourage people to apply to that fund. And again, just a good demonstration of community, but congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
So Madam Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by councillors Fatta and Myers, resolved that the minutes of regular council meeting of May 11, 2015 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
And under Agenda Item 3, Declaration of pecuniary interest, councillor Campodice has declared with respect to SR Steel, as an employee of SR Steel Algoma, he had an item on the May 11 meeting as well as the SR Steel Algoma Correspondence and the Memorandum of Settlement USWA Local 2251 Transit Mechanics and the Port of Algoma Agreement for Consulting Services. And Mayor Provenzano has declared with respect to the item request to repeal bylaw business in suburban area. Are there other conflicts?
Councillor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find myself in that situation where when in doubt, declare, I'm gonna declare conflict on 6.4, the request to repeal bylaw for the BIA. My employer was canvassed a number of times in the area that we're located in to join the BIA, so I find myself in doubt, so I'm gonna declare conflict.
Understood. Thank you councillor. Any other conflicts?
Under Agenda Item 4, a motion by councillors Fatta and Sheehan, resolved that the agenda for May 25 to any 15 city council meeting is presented, be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 5, Troy and Annette Chandler are present with respect to hydrocephalus and spina bifida awareness month.
Welcome to City councillor Troy, City council Troy. Come to the microphone. I should, I should tell everybody that the gentleman approaching the microphone was my very first boss ever. When I was in grade nine, I worked at the Stell Hotel, and Troy Chandler was responsible for managing me. So he was the first, first person in the city of Sault Ste. Marie that had to try and manage me. So welcome to council tonight, Troy, he's an old friend.
Thank you Mayor Christian. Mayor Christian, members of city council and everyone else watching, hi, good afternoon. My name is Troy Chandler, and I have hydrocephalus. I am here with my wife Annette, sitting over there. We are here as the representatives of Sault Ste. Marie for the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario, on behalf of everyone and their families in Sault Ste. Marie and surrounding area who are affected by these conditions. We want to thank council for taking the time to declare June 2015 as Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month. Hydrocephalus, also known as water on the brain, can lead to swelling and can permanently damage the brain, causing both physical and mental growth. Spina bifida is a neural tube birth defect in which either the brain and spine, or only the spine, failed to develop properly in the womb. Both of these disorders can be disabling and lifelong, presenting daily hardships. Our goal is to continue creating awareness. Therefore, to help celebrate, we are holding Troy's Trail, an annual fundraising walk scheduled for June 13 at 11:30 a.m. down at Clerk Park Boardwalk by the art gallery. This is our fourth year holding the event, and I'm really, really hoping that summer gets here by then. We have been collecting pledges and will continue to do so up until time of the walk. Every dollar raised goes towards the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario to help them with research, support programs and other services, and families who are affected by these two conditions. The association does not receive any government funding, so we the members, anything we the members can do goes a real long way. Each year we have met and talked with some really nice people, shared our stories and experiences, and have truly been there for one another. The awareness is spreading, we are growing, and we really feel we're making a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you Troy, I have a proclamation. Whereas spina bifida is a birth defect that develops within the first four weeks of pregnancy, resulting in varying degrees of permanent neurological damage. Whereas hydrocephalus is an excessive accumulation of fluid in the brain, which may be present at birth or may develop at any later stage in life. Whereas there is no cure for either of these conditions that result in varying degrees of disability. And whereas the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario serves people with spina bifida and hydrocephalus, their families in the public. And whereas Health Canada has proclaimed June as Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month. And whereas there are many people who are not aware of the association, or that it offers support, information and education programs, and funds research to find ways to prevent and treat these conditions. And whereas the association encourages all Ontarians to learn more about these conditions, and to appreciate the challenges faced by individuals affected by them. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of June to be Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. And I urge all citizens to give full consideration and attention to the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario for their work on behalf of those with spina bifida and hydrocephalus and their families. Thank you, thank you. Councillor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, I'm just gonna ask you to repeat one more time for the public, the date of Troy's Trail, the walk. It's June?
Yeah, Saturday, June 13.
Yep. And what time?
11:30.
And at?
The Clerk Park Boardwalk.
Starting at Clerk Park over by the library area?
Yeah, down by the art gallery.
Oh, down by the art gallery. Okay, June 13, 11:30 a.m. Ward 2, we challenge the other wards to get there and raise funds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much Troy.
Really appreciate it.
Good seeing you and Annette.
Thanks.
Take care.
Congratulations as well on your marriage.
Appreciate that.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Senior Citizen Month, Senior Games Week, June 1 to 5, 2015. Terry Lou LaGroix, supervisor, senior services, and Rose Jessup, senior games committee member, are in attendance.
Welcome to City Hall, Rose and Terry.
Thank you. Mayor Provenzano, city councillors and city staff, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to say a few words this evening. Senior citizens have been participating in Senior Citizens Month for over 30 years. Each year, the Ontario government chooses a theme to recognize work that seniors, senior groups provide to their communities. This year, the theme is Vibrant Seniors, Vibrant Communities. During the month of June, senior services staff plan and promote active living arts and crafts, educational and social programs for seniors 55-plus at both our senior citizen centers. Seniors Month is a good opportunity for us to put the spotlight on local services and programs available in our community, to allow seniors to stay as independent as possible. There are many individuals, groups, service clubs and businesses that offer a variety of programs that provide enjoyment and social time for seniors. The key is to get seniors involved and to stay involved. This statistic taken from the 2012 census data showed that the percentage of the population aged 65 and over in Sault Ste. Marie is 19.3%, which is 4.5% higher than the national average. This shows that seniors are living long and leading healthy lives, and we need to continue to accommodate and secure sufficient recreational activities and interests to meet the need in our community. The Sault Ste. Marie Senior Games are held the first week of June each year. This year, we are celebrating 28 years. Our Sault Ste. Marie Senior Games Committee work hard each year to ensure that each participant, whether skilled or not, are able to participate in the present games. Senior Games has always focused on fun, fitness and fellowship. Anyone over the age of 55 can participate. Tips and points are provided to each individual before the start of each game played. There are 15 events and are held at different venues throughout the city. Indoor and outdoor games are played such as pickleball, darts, golf, tennis, tenpin and Wii bowling, golf ball and washer toss, shuffleboard and carpet bowling, that's just to name a few. We would like to thank Superior View Golf Course and Northcrest Bowling Lanes for hosting an event each year. Seniors can register in advance by calling the Senior Citizens Drop and Center or the Steelton Senior Citizen Center. If they are undecided, they can register up until the time of each event. We encourage all seniors 55-plus to participate. We also extend an invitation to each of you to join us at any time during the week of June 1st to the 5th, 215. We have Sault Ste. Marie Senior Games schedules with us for each of you tonight, and we know that if you become involved, you'll become hooked on participating in a sporting or social event during our local Sault Ste. Marie Senior Games.
Thank you. I have a proclamation here. Whereas the province of Ontario has declared the month of June as Senior Citizens Month, and whereas the theme is Vibrant Seniors, Vibrant Communities, which focuses on the contribution everyone makes to our community, and that seniors have a store of wisdom, years of experience, and the desire to teach, learn, create and share their talents with others. And whereas Senior Citizens Month means enjoying activities developed in their honor, which provides fun and social enrichment. And whereas this year celebrates the 28th Annual Sault Ste. Marie Senior Games from June 1st to June 5th, a week comprised of sporting events that promote fun, fitness and fellowship to seniors 55 and over in our community. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim and pronounce the month of June 2015 as Senior Citizens Month in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you very much for your time today.
You're welcome. Rose Jessup, our committee member, would like to present to you our Senior Games flag.
Sure, absolutely.
And it's going to be flown here at City Hall during the week of the Games.
Great. Come on right up here. You can open the flag up and show it to everybody in the community. And the Games are June 1st to June 5th?
Yes.
And if people want to get involved in these, what's the best way of going about doing that?
They can either call either of the centers, or they can just show up on the day of each of the events, and they can register at that time.
There you go. There you go, Senior Games, Sault Ste. Marie, that's great, so we'll fly that somewhere. Maybe we can fly it outside of City Hall properly.
Yes.
That's great.
Arrangements have been made.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we have schedules available here at City Hall, so we'll make them available to the general public some, some way.
Under Agenda Item 5.3, Parks and Recreation Month, Joe Kane, the manager of Recreation and Culture, is in attendance.
Welcome, Mr. Kane.
Good evening, Mayor Provenzano, members of council, city staff and citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the importance of recreation and parks to our community and to promote June as Recreation and Parks Month across Ontario. Prior to the mayor reading the proclamation, I'd like to review with you some of the quick facts about the general health of people in Ontario and how recreation and parks can contribute to reducing the impacts of inactivity. One in three Ontarians is affected by chronic disease. In the 1990s, obesity rates among children and youth almost doubled. By 2004, the overweight rate for children and youth was 18% and 8% were obese, a combined rate of 26%. Almost 60% of Ontarians are overweight, with 23% classified as obese. 46% of adults and 27% of youth do not get enough daily physical activity for optimal health. It's estimated that physical inactivity costs governments between $2.2 and $2.5 billion a year in direct and indirect care costs. That's the bad information. Recreation, sports, arts, culture, parks, open and natural spaces are important toward mitigating these health concerns. They're essential to personal health strategies along with a balanced diet, key to balanced human development, helping us to reach our potential, and essential to the quality of life and place. Help reduce self-destructive and antisocial behavior. Help build strong families and healthy communities. Help reduce healthcare, social service and police injustice costs. Are significant economic generators to the community. In summary, leisure activities, parks and green spaces are essential to our physical, intellectual, social and spiritual well-being, to our quality of life, to the environment and our economic sustainability. This year, the theme of Recreation and Parks Month is Play Every Day, expressing the importance of fun and play through recreation and parks for healthy, active and balanced lives. Parks and Recreation Ontario, or PRO for short, is the organization responsible for the June is Recreation and Parks Month initiative. We have registered the city of Sault Ste. Marie on their website as an ambassador community in support of the JRPM. We have a number of events and activities taking place during the month of June that are focused around play and living healthy, active lives for all ages. Virginia MacLeod will provide you a brief PowerPoint overview of what is taking place over the next month.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We're excited about a number of events that the city of Sault Ste. Marie and the Community Services Department is gonna be hosting over the next month. We're gonna be kicking off a little bit early on May 31st with a community family fun event taking place at the Northern Community Centre. The event is going to be happening from 1 to 3 p.m., and it's a free family fun event for everyone. We're gonna be holding a number of interactive games, as well as focusing on some sports that are Pan Am sports, such as soccer and seeded volleyball. We'll also be having a free play area for the children to participate in, as well as a craft station, and nutritious snacks will be available throughout the event. Our next event is going to be the Pan Am torch relay. It's taking place on Monday, June 1st, from 5 to 8 p.m. down at Roberta Bondur Pavilion. During that time, the event activities open up at 5, the stage entertainment begins at 5:30. We have a local band, The Hustle Brothers, that'll be playing that evening, along with an upcoming young artist called Francesco Yates, will be presented through OLG. Throughout the evening, families can participate in a number of sporting activities, games, as well as face painting, balloon animals, and we're gonna have a large craft section, giant mural, so we invite everybody to come out and take part, and welcome the torch as it rises into Sault Ste. Marie. Next, as our coworker Terry Lou mentioned, the Senior Games is an important part of getting people out and getting them active throughout our community, and Terry Lou provided you with a bunch of details on that activity. Another great event is the Strath opening of the Dog Park, which is going to be taking place on June 4th at 3:30 p.m. at the new Dog Park located off of Second Line, near the Humane Society. This is an excellent example of a community partnership which has come to fruition. We'd like to thank LOL Dogs for all of their hard work and dedication throughout this process, along with the city staff. Another new event that we're looking at kicking off this year to get people out and get them active is Go Skate Day. We're in the planning process at this point with the Superior Community Skate Park Association. The event is going to be taking place on Sunday, June 21st, at the skate park. During that time, we're gonna be running some clinics in the morning for younger skaters to teach them the skills and safety required to participate in skateboarding. And then in the afternoon, we'll be holding some skateboarding competitions, along with music and a barbecue throughout the evening. And to wrap up, one of our last events that's going to be taking place happens on July 4th. It's the Hub Trail Festival, which is now in its fourth year, or sorry, July 1st, sorry, I apologize, from 10 to 2, and it's in its fourth year of operation. There'll be nine stops throughout the Hub Trail, and you can pick up Lemonade and Genetti's at the Marconi. There's stops also, Algoma Public Health Unit is stationed at Finn Hill, along with many others, and if you visit the hubtrailfestival.ca website, all of the details will be provided there. So we encourage everybody to get out that morning of Canada Day, take your bike down and join us for the rest of the festivities taking place at Roberta Bondur Park in the And the last initiative that I'd like to share is our outdoor fitness equipment project, which will be installed in June this year. We have nine pieces of equipment that will be going in at Clerk Park. This is just a sample layout of the equipment, but it's gonna provide a great opportunity for people to, as they're using the Hub Trail for cycling, walking, jogging, to stop and do some strength training exercises when they're out enjoying the day.
Thank you. Mayor Provenzano, would you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Virginia Joe, for your presentations. Whereas in Sault Ste. Marie, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems providing countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors from around the world. And whereas recreation enhances quality of life, balanced living and lifelong learning, helps people live happier and longer, develops skills and positive self-image, in children and youth, develops creativity and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyles. And whereas recreation participation builds family unity and social capital, strengthens volunteer and community development, enhances social interaction, creates community pride and vitality, and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity. And whereas parks, open space and trails provide active and passive outdoor recreation opportunities, help maintain clean air and water, and promote stewardship of the natural environment. And whereas the benefits provided by recreation programs, facilities, service parks and open space reduce healthcare and social service costs, serve to boost the economy, economic renewal and sustainability, enhance property values, attracting business, increase tourism and curb employee absenteeism. And whereas Ontario has designated June as Recreation and Parks Month, and annually recognizes and celebrates the benefits derived year-round from quality public and private recreation and parks resources at the local, regional and provincial levels. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Recreation and Parks Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.4, Kids Summer Festival Committee, June 7, 2015, Dan Fraser of the Safe Communities Partnership is in attendance.
Welcome, Mr. Fraser.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the community. My name is Dan Fraser, I'm a fire prevention officer here, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here just to make a little announcement with regard to the Kids' Summer Safety Festival. I also have here Marty Crossen, who's the coordinator of Safe Communities Partnership, who is the umbrella organization for all safety and injury prevention initiatives locally. Safe Communities Partnership facilitates a range of subcommittees comprised of subject matter experts who deliver educational programming to all demographic segments in the community. Our goal is to help stimulate a communal culture focused on safety and injury prevention. On June 7th, between 11 a.m. and 3 p.m., we'll be hosting our 10th Annual Kids' Summer Safety Festival. The Kids' Summer Safety Festival is a family-oriented event designed to educate children on safety and injury prevention topics geared towards summer activities. Children will be educated on a variety of topics that include safe camping, fire safety, electrical hazard awareness, injury prevention, water safety, bicycle and helmet safety. In order to, to deliver the educational messages, we partner with local organizations, set up displays to have educational messages, or with representatives, interact with attendees at the event, sharing their knowledge and answering questions. Some of the organizations we partner include Algoma Public Health, Sault Ste. Marie Police Services, Sault Ste. Marie Fire Services, John Rhodes Community Pools, Canadian Power Squadron, Sault Search and Rescue, Emergency Preparedness, Sault Ste. Marie Red Cross, and several others. There's 18 agencies in total. The festival will also offer a variety of entertainment, interactive activities for kids and their families. This year, we'll be offering inflatable park, the fire truck display, school bus display, bicycle helmet fitting, face painting, giveaways from corporate sponsors. We have also secured a children's entertainer, his name is Ronald, to perform for the attendees, and he's also master of ceremonies. We're very excited about the projected turnout of the festival, because last year we saw over 5,000 attendees at the event. They were very enthusiastic in their feedback. Last year councillor Lou Turco attended the event and acted as our master of ceremonies. This year councillor Rick Nero has graciously accepted an invitation to attend. We have identified some expected outcomes from this year's event, may include raising awareness of dangers and risks that are inherent in summer activities, decreasing the potential likelihood of injury for Sault Ste. Marie's children this summer, informing and updating families about important safety and injury precautions for children, and allowing community-oriented organizations the opportunity to fulfill their mandates. Safe Communities Partnership is proud to offer families in the community the opportunity to attend events where they can learn about important safety strategies and allow their kids to have fun regardless of socioeconomic status. We are grateful for the support that city council has offered to us in the past, and we thank you for giving us the opportunity to report back to you, informing you of the good work that the organization is doing.
I do not have a proclamation in front of me, Mr. Fraser. I understood you just wanted the opportunity to present to council.
That's right. I just wanted to make it a community aware that the event is going on, and we really appreciate the support that council has given to communities in the past.
Well, we thank you for your hard work, and we obviously hope the event's a great success.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I think it's 5:30, so we have to proceed to the planning agenda. We have one matter on the planning agenda tonight.
Under Agenda Item 7.6.1, A1215 Sed, with respect to 342 to 346 John Street, a motion by councillors Fatta and Myers, resolved that the report of the planner dated by Councillors Fatta and Myers, resolved that the report of the planner dated May 25, 2015 concerning A-1215 Zed, 342 to 346 John Street, be received as information and that council defer this application until June 22, 2015, with new public notices to be provided.
So this is simply a matter of a deferral council? Do we have any discussion on it? All in favor? Thank you. I understand the, this Carrie, the gentleman from the Downtown Association is here, so we're going to actually move to that item in the agenda because I think he has somewhere else to get to. I'm conflicted on that because I'm a property owner in the Downtown Corps.
Councillor Romano has also declared a community interest with respect to that item as his spouse is a member of the Downtown Association Board. He is the acting mayor for May, so we'll go to acting mayor for June, which is Councillor Bruni, to take the chair for this item.
Counselor Bruni?
If there are any questions, it is on consent.
Well, I should still step away for it in the event.
So the motion is by Councillors Fatta and Sheehan, resolved that the report of the city clerk dated May 25, 2015, concerning request to repeal bylaw business improvement area be received and that the city clerk be authorized to proceed to give notice of council's intention to repeal bylaw 76419 in accordance with the relevant provisions of the Municipal Act 2001.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Bruni. I just wanted to ask our solicitor if she could just walk us through a little bit. I know that I've had inquiries, I think others have had inquiries. People think that council has a choice in what we're about to do on this matter, so if you could, please, Madam Acting C E O Solicitor, please enlighten us as to what is before us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Myers, and my enlightenment is going to be relatively dim because this really falls under the Clerk's Department. I can assure you that it is completely a statutory procedural mechanism. There is no room for discretion, but in terms of fine tuning it, I know the Clerk's Department is dealing with it. I don't know if you can flesh that out maybe more?
Well, it's just simply the Act states that council shall give notice in accordance with the subsection 210 of a proposed bylaw to repeal the bylaw under subsection, provided they've received a request for the repeal signed by persons who are responsible for at least one-third of the taxes levied for the purposes of the general, local, municipality, levy on ratable property, and all prescribed business property classes in the improvement area. Because that's so, and you've got your notice of sufficiency from tax, that obliges us to give the notice of passing of the repeal, and then depending on what the response is to that, that's the next step.
Okay, if I could, Mr. Acting Mayor, thank you, both of you. My point is simply that this is in accordance with the Municipal Act. We don't have a choice over this because we've been lobbied by people to not proceed with this. And I've sent them a copy of the Clerk's Report that says clearly we are following the Act, we have no choice before us, and then the question has come, well, what happens from here? And again, I would indulge and ask someone to just simply refer to this next 60-day period and what can occur in either us coming back again to finalize or that there could be an alternative.
The notice will go out, and if half of the persons entitled to receive notices, I believe representing 50% of the taxes, taxes or assessment?
Yes.
Then that would make it effective.
So to be clear, it's the property owners who pay municipal taxes, and I believe it's between Pim and Dennis is the properties in question, and they have an opportunity in the next 60 days to comment or...
They will receive a notice.
Yeah, and then we'll get a response, we being the city. We get it, and then it will come back to council as another item after the 60-day period?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Clear as mud.
Dwayne, please. First of all, is there any other questions from councillors? Dwayne?
Mayor, council, or acting mayor? I just wanted to clarify, it is property owners, but there will, along with that, notice will be if the taxes are passed down to the business owners, then they therefore have the right to vote on behalf. Okay?
A tenant who pays the business, yeah.
The municipal tax. Yep, that's...
Okay, thank you.
No other questions?
Any other questions from councillors?
Thank you.
So just asked for, yep.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you.
I guess, until the Mayor, Province Annual comes back in the room, the consent motion moved by Councillors Fatta and Myers that all items listed under date May 25, 2015, Part 1 Consent Agenda be approved as recommended, save and accept Agenda Item 6.4.
Any questions? Counselor Butler?
I guess question, but more comment. Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program. The government, well, it's part of our agenda, has announced that I think they want, they're going to allocate $150 million across Canada to celebrate Canada's 150th birthday. And reading more detail into it, we find, we discovered that 5.2 million is allocated for all of Northern Ontario, and that is not going to go very far. Mr. Apostle has indicated to us via email that the Strathclere Lighting Project is, we would think, a goal. Mr. Kane, I see you nodding. That's probably one thing that we'll proceed with. I know Councillors Shoemaker and Kompadich talked about the Northern Community Centre, the McMecon addition and timeframes on that. That is something perhaps that we need to talk about. I think we need to huddle rather quickly. I know Mr. Girardi shared with us an idea earlier this evening, but that could be a part of our discussion. And the other one, it's specifically noted that cenotaphs can also apply for grants, and Mr. Healy and his group are already proceeding in that direction. So if we can't make something shovel-ready, it's going to be difficult. So any projects that we have, they have to move forward very quickly. And also, you can stack, or I call it kickback, NOHFC funding can go along with this 150th birthday funding, so that may give us a little more ability to complete a couple of projects. These projects will have to be completed by 2000, the end of 2017, and they hope to make announcements prior to October. So this is a very much a rush infrastructure job, but I think we need to take advantage of it for Sault Ste. Marie. But once again, 5 million is not going to go very far in all of Northern Ontario, but nevertheless, let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So we have Councillor Sheehan.
Yes, thank you very much. It's Item 6.1.2, the SR Steel Algoma Inc. I've read through the report and the question, and I also received this letter, and I noted that you did too, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sure other members of council did, from the Vice President at Teneres, David McCaddy, also sharing their concern for the, what's happening with the potential of the steel dumping, and had an opportunity to speak with him today, and he said that, you know, his words were on a slippery slope here, that there's precedents that could be set, that could really be damaging for the local steel industry, both at SR and at Teneres. My question through you to Mr. Mayor, I guess the response and reading what we can and cannot do to the CEO, will our response be in writing? I think we missed the deadline to actually show up in person. Is that correct? Like, what would be the strategy to respond to this?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, Councillor Sheehan, we're going to review the correspondence, and I think it's already maybe a foregone conclusion what the response is going to be, but we will provide a written response, albeit a little bit tardy, likely indicating support, but I'll make that recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. It is very important, and the local steel industry is very, very concerned with this.
Yeah, I think, Councillor Sheehan, the spirit and intention is to support both employers, and they're obviously really important to our community, so we're just, legal's having a look at that to make sure we do it in the most appropriate way, and, but that's certainly the direction we want to head in.
Thank you.
Anybody else on that matter? Any other matters in the consent agenda? Councillor Myers? One at a time.
Couple of them, Mr. Mayor. First one is the street closing 6.3 for the Running Event.
Okay.
This is a joint Ward 2, Ward 1 initiative. Actually, it's an initiative from the public, but it will take place in Ward 2 and Ward 1, and it's Queen Street East from Kohler to Pine, and then from Queen Street East from Lake to Barber Boulevard, and it's on Sunday, the 7th. So just a little heads up to the public, the roads will be open, but there will be runners in the bicycle lane, and I believe there's legal agreements and things with our legal department that look after this from an insurance point of view. So that's that one, and wish them well with that event.
Before you move on, does anybody else have any comments on that agenda item? Seeing none, councillor Myers?
Next one is 6.6, the name for the leash-free Dog Park. It was mentioned already in the report a little bit earlier, but just again, want to comment that it's very appropriate, given the ongoing generosity of the Sinclair family in providing the land for yet another recreational facility in our community, so Strathclere Dog Park is a great name for that. On to the next one?
Yep, please. There's no other comments on the leash-free Dog Park? Please?
6.7 is the heritage property grant to ten Kensington Terrace, again in Ward 2. And for people who are not familiar, this building, you may have noticed in the report, it was built in 1865, second oldest building in our city, so it's a very important and a very old, obviously old, but I'm sure it's of interest to Councillor Shoemaker to look into the history of this building, and I'm sure that former Premier Hurst was there at some point, visiting and having tea or a glass of wine. But it's a wonderful building in Ward 2, and I just again reemphasize our importance of our heritage neighborhoods, and I get my dig in that I'm looking forward to our policy coming back from planning, Mr. Dilchetti and Mr. McConnell. That's that one. On to Yellowfish Road, Item 6.8. Yellowfish Road is an event that we've been working with for some time with Madison Zupa through our environmental initiatives. It actually came to me from a constituent in the Girl Guides, so it's a great initiative. The Girl Guides and the city are partnering on this, and a lot of our city staff have been involved, and I want to thank each department that's been involved, and it's going to be a great event in our city later on next month, so, like, Yellowfish Road.
Any other comments on Yellowfish Road? Seeing none? Are you, any more, councillor Myers?
One more, Mr. Mayor. You'd think my name was something else, eh? The, this is actually probably something that I can, I think it's under the bylaw, the Homelessness Partnering Strategy Funding, is that under, still under consent? It is, isn't it? Yeah. Item 6.1.7?
It is. Yep, that's correct.
Homelessness Partnering Strategy Funding. I know that Mr. Nadeau is here. This is, Mr. Nadeau, really great news for our community, and it looks like there's four agencies that we'll be partnering with on this. If you could just maybe draw a little bit of attention to this, it's a very important initiative. Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nadeau?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers.
Sheehan Myers for her partnership.
I'm looking directly across, sorry. The Homelessness Partnering Strategy is federal money that the city has received for quite some time, and we've received another five-year allotment. It does a lot of really innovative thinking. We've transitioned it from just funding the shelters, now we're starting to move it into some community support worker for the United Way. John Howard is also putting into a case manager to start to provide some direct support to, with the goal of ending homelessness in the community is what we'd ultimately like to achieve. So it's a great initiative. It is 100% federal funding, which makes it an even more important initiative because it shows that there's federal partnership and federal investment in homelessness, and we're excited to implement the direction of the Social Development Council that actually recommends where we're going to allocate the funding on an annual basis.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's six members of council who sit on the DSAB and, you know, work with Mr. Nadeau, and I believe there's 28 agencies in this coalition, and it's just a fantastic example of how with that federal funding, not a large amount of money, but that amount is on a go-forward for the next two years at least dispersed through United Way, John Howard, Pauline's Place, and Vincent's Place Men's Shelter. So as Mr. Nadeau said, it's going directly to folks in our community who need it and who are on the ground, running, and just really good initiatives. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councillor Kompadich?
This is on a different consent item.
That's fine. Which item are you speaking to?
On 615, and it's a 2015 ditching program.
Okay.
And just a comment and then a question. I just want to mention there's a fair amount of work that's going to be completed in Ward 6 regarding ditching this year. I see there's a number of streets that are going to be done in areas, and we do have a high amount of ditches in our ward. It's more rural, and I just want to know, my question would go to Commissioner Dulcetti. I want to know what the major problems that you're going to be addressing with the ditching program there and what your expected outcomes are going to be.
I think that should go to Commissioner Girardi.
Councillor Kompadich, yes. The ditching program, of course, is first of all going to be starting from the west and going to the east. I know councillor Kompadich would certainly love to hear that for this year, but the things that we're trying to accomplish are, there's a lot of areas where there's a lack of grade, there's culvert issues, so those are some of the things that we're going to be addressing this year. Of course, any areas that we've noticed that had flooding, and we've identified a few actually with you out in the field, so it's not just your area, but throughout the city, we'll be addressing all those same items. So lack of grade, culverts, and any potential flooding issues.
Just want to thank P W T for the work they've been doing, especially with their limited resources.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Fatta, you have something on the same matter? Please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Larry, as far as the ditching program for Sackville Road, I see that it doesn't include Northridge Road. Would that be included in that stretch, Northridge Road? Because that's been an ongoing concern now also.
Through Mr. Mayor, to councillor Fatta, if you're talking about the backside of Northridge Road, I mean, we addressed that last year. There is actually no, we cleaned out the brush because it was mostly a brush issue. If there is, Sackville, we're going to be starting most, I think it's actually more mid, the midsection of Sackville Road towards where the Truss Plant is. There's some sitting water in that area that we have to address, but if there is issues down in that area, we're certainly going to be taking a run right through there, and those will be addressed also.
On the same issue, councillor Butler? Go ahead, please.
To Mr. Girardi, there's three or four in Ward 1, and it's a good thing that we do this, but I also cringe at the same time because generally, 75% are saying, oh, this is a good thing, thank you very much, and 25% of them say, why in the world are you doing this to my ditch? Because I put my lawnmower down into it, and now you ruined it for me. So do we communicate with each and every resident that may be impacted by a ditching program on any street?
Through Mr. Mayor, councillor Butler, when we're coming into a street, we don't necessarily send out letters or anything like that saying we're coming to ditch in front of your property. Again, it is city property, and if there's a drainage issue, we have to address it. So there are, you're right, you're absolutely correct, there are residents that certainly don't appreciate us coming in and ditching, but again, we have to deal with the problem.
Councillor Butler? Yep, go ahead.
It would be too much to ask if...
It would be too much to ask if in fact we would communicate with the residents, because it removes most issues.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Button, on the day that we're there, we go down through the street, and we let the people know that we will be working in front of their place, but if you prefer us to send something out to those neighborhoods, we could look at that. Keep in mind that we have several areas that we do ditching in, and that would be just an added work that we'd have to do before we get to the site.
I'm not going to force you, Mr. Girardi, without a vote, but I would ask you to consider that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Button, what we could do is put something on our media page, to allow people, let them know that will be in their area, how about that?
That's a good starting point. Thank you.
Councillor Bruni, same issue?
To Mr. Girardi, Commissioner Girardi, what is the time limit for this? Is this going to be completed by September, or does it carry over to October, November?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni, we set up our programs for what we can complete in the season, weather permitting, of course. If we ended up with some major storm like we did in 2013, we change our focus, obviously. But if, if things go according to plan, we will be completed this by the end of September.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Myers, you briefly had your hand up, you didn't, you're, you're good?
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Girardi captured it. PUC's done a good job of doing the, through the website, communicating, telling people when they're going to be in the area with the unilateral, unidirectional flushing, so maybe it's something we can adapt or adopt and do the same thing, just in communicating a number of the Public Works projects when we're going to be in an area.
Councillor Sheehan?
Yes, thank you very much. On the same thing, the ditching program for Ward 2, Co-Prash Wireless Ontario and Ferguson were identified. I know you mentioned that you would be starting in the west end and then heading east, is there any timelines when you might be, be in that area, that vicinity, doing those streets in Ward 2?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Sheehan, I certainly couldn't set dates, and I would, it wouldn't be very smart of me to do something like that, not knowing what the weather conditions, and I would be, but again, you're following far to the east, so you know that you're going to be August, September.
August, September?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I expect that's, we've exhausted ditching. So any other items in the consent agenda? Councillor Button, you had your hand up? One more.
611 Port of Algoma, the master consultant to KPMGNACom. This is as big a consulting agreement that I've ever seen in, as long as I've been around. I guess my question to Mr. Dolce, do we sit at the table with these people, or do we get regular updates? How do we keep track of what's in this massive consultation agreement?
Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Button, yes, we do sit at the table, we're part of the project management team, there's representation from the city, there's representation from the E.C., and of course, there's representation from SR Ports and SR Steel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on that matter? Any other matters in the consent agenda? Councillor Shoemaker, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, one item I'd like to pull off consent is 6.1.3, the report on the addendum on, concerning Algoma Public Health. I'd like to defer that, if possible, I'd like to move to defer that, just so I could get a better chance to take a look at it. I know it's only a couple pages, but we just got it as we sat down at council today, so.
Do you have a seconder for that motion? Councillor?
That's the Algoma Public Health Correspondence. I didn't put a motion with it, did you want to just bring a motion to a subsequent meeting with respect to it?
Yeah, just, I suppose, to accept it at a subsequent meeting as information, just because I'd, I'd like to take a look at it, see if I have any questions on it, and if we move along with it now, I won't get that opportunity at the next council meeting, so I would just like to move to defer it, and I suppose move to accept it at the next meeting, if that's the way we choose to go.
So is the motion then to, to?
What I can do is just put it as correspondence on the, on the June 8th agenda as well.
Okay. That satisfies your request?
That satisfies me, thank you.
Councillor Myers, you were going to second that, that's satisfactory?
Sure.
Okay. Any other matters in the consent agenda? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Under agenda item 7.8.1, appointment of members to the FJ Davy Home, I have a motion by councillors Fatta and Myers, resolved that the report of the city clerk dated May 25, 2015, concerning appointment of members, FJ Davy Home be received as information.
So we have Malcolm's report in front of us, we also have a list of names in front of us of people who applied. I want to make a note to the general public that when you apply for positions on boards and committees, it's really helpful to the council to give us, you know, a substantive application with your CV, so we have a lot of information, and a number of the people, some of them we know, some of them we don't know, but it's really helpful when we do receive that. I personally would like to nominate Linda Ryan. I've worked with Linda Ryan, other boards and committees, she's exceptional, she has great human resource history and human resource skill, I know her to be a really caring person and a really community-oriented person. I'd like to also nominate Terry Renoni, he's got a great financial skill set, he's a very successful local businessman, I know Terry very well, I've known him for a lot of years, and I know that he would serve this board well. I understand that some other councillors have some nominations, so I won't eat up the floor with them. Councillor Romano?
I'd like to nominate Anthony Morado, he's a lawyer in our community, and I have worked with him in my professional capacity, and I think he would be an asset to the organization, to the Davy Home Board.
Great, that's three. Any other nominations? Councillor Shoemaker?
I'd like to nominate Carly Campbell, who's a young professional in the community that works at Sioux College, and someone I know, and I know wants to be involved in the community. And I'd also like to nominate Frank Jencarelli, who is a former social services employee, who I believe worked his whole career with the social services, and recently retired, and also very dedicated to being involved.
Great. Any other councillor, nominations councillors? Councillor Fatta?
Name Susan McCuey.
Okay. So that will be six. Any other nominations, councillors?
That's all you got.
Oh, that's all we got, yeah. So everybody who applied, everybody's been nominated. So we have six people, so there'll be a vote, we've been through this before, you have up to five votes, you don't have to use all of your votes, and the lowest name will drop off.
It's okay.
No problem.
Okay, have councillor Bruni, Frank Jencarelli, Terry Renoni, Linda Ryan, Anthony Morado, and Susan McCuey. Councillor Fatta, Frank Jencarelli, Anthony Morado, Susan McCuey, Terry Renoni, and Linda Ryan. Councillor Button. Campbell, Jencarelli, Morado, Renoni, and Ryan. Councillor Myers. Carly Campbell, Anthony Morado, Linda Ryan, Susan McCuey, Terry Renoni. Councillor Kompodich. Linda Ryan, Terry Renoni, Anthony Morado. You've got a name on of somebody who withdrew.
Yeah.
So I'll.
Frank Jencarelli?
Um.
Carly Campbell.
Carly Campbell, but there's another, councillor Kompodich has the opportunity to vote for another person. Okay.
You can grab your sheet, councillor.
Councillor Nero, Carly Campbell, Frank Jencarelli, Anthony Morado, Terry Renoni, and Linda Ryan. Councillor Shoemaker, Terry Renoni, Linda Ryan, Anthony Morado, Frank Jencarelli, and Carly Campbell. Councillor Romano, Anthony Morado, Carly Campbell, Terry Renoni, Linda Ryan, and Susan McCuey. Councillor Hoopinen, Carly Campbell, Frank Jencarelli, Anthony Morado, Terry Renoni, and Linda Ryan. Councillor Sheehan. Linda Ryan, Terry Renoni, Anthony Morado, Frank Jencarelli, and Carly Campbell. Councillor Christian, Terry Renoni, Linda Ryan, Carly Campbell, Frank Jencarelli, Anthony Morado. Mayor Provinciano, Carly Campbell, Frank Jencarelli, Anthony Morado, Terry Renoni, and Linda Ryan.
So we, it's, it's Carly Campbell, Frank Jencarelli, Anthony Morado, Terry Renoni, and Linda Ryan, all received more than majority of the votes. Susan McCuey received the least number of votes. Would you agree with that, Sister Sister?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
So then I have a motion by councillors Bruni and Myers, resolved that the following individuals are approved exclusively as members of the FJ Davy Home Corporation, Linda Ryan, Terry Renoni, Anthony Morado, Carly Campbell, and Frank Jencarelli.
All in favor?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
And under agenda item 7.8.2, appointment of member Economic Development Corporation, a motion by councillors Fatta and Sheehan, resolved that councillor S. Myers be appointed to the Sioux-St. Marie Economic Development Corporation on an interim basis.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Carried.
And under agenda item 11, I have a motion by councillors Bruni and Sheehan, resolved that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date May 25, 2015 be approved.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councillors Bruni and Myers, that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Councillor Sheehan was surprisingly in good behavior tonight.